I'm opening the, the meeting of the Board of Appeals for February 8th at 6:30 PM. The first item I wanted to do was just to do the minutes for our last meeting. I think they were sent out to everybody in advance. Do we have a motion to either change or approve as written?
Go below.
Anybody second, second, all in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Note, it was unanimous. So the next thing I want to do is take on the matter of the appeal of the building inspector's decision. If the clerk would, if they have it, read. If not, then Bethany or somebody could read the, the notice for the hearing.
Brian's not here, so I don't know if Bethany's in a position to read.
Well, I don't know. Bethany, do you have a copy of the notice? It was, that we could at least read in the record?
Yeah, I'll just pull it up.
Okay.
Case ZAA 2021-1 Administrative Appeal of Denial of Building Permit for the Installation of a 14,400 Ground-Mounted Solar Modules at Rear Pease Road, Assassin's Parcel ID 33-1-0, Located at a 21.26 plus or minus acre site in the Residence Double A Zoning District, Petitioner PLH LLC, 222 South 9th Street, Suite 1600, Monopolyus, Minnesota. And it was published on January 25th, 2021, and February 2nd, 2021.
And were notices sent out to the abutters as well?
Yeah.
Okay. And I note that the, the date of the decision of the building inspector, you know, for jurisdictional, do we have the date of the decision in terms of the date to the appeal that was filed in timely manner under Mass General law, Chapter 48? Within the 30 days?
The building inspector's denial was December 22nd, 2020.
And what was the date of the appeal? The letter we received it?
Oh, January 15th, 2021.
Okay, so under the statute, it, just for, you know, jurisdictional purposes, they filed it within the 30 days as required by Mass General law, Chapter 48, and therefore, the appeal was timely. So, let me explain the rules going forward. First of all, in order to overturn the building inspector, the decision has to be four of five members here. Secondly, anybody who is going to speak in favor either the petitioner or an opposition, please state your name and address as you speak. You will be given a period, the proponents will be given a period of time to give their side of the story first. Anybody who wants to speak in favor of the proponent can speak. Then we'll open it up, once they're done, to the members, anybody else who's in opposition. They may speak, and then the petitioner may speak. If there's anybody that comes in opposition with anything different than the petitioner provide to rebut that. At any time, the board members may ask questions and concerns with respect to the appeal. So with that said, and then we will make a decision, maybe tonight, hopefully tonight. We'll file that decision, and any decisions can be appealed within 20 days or 30 days. I think it's 20 days of our decision filed with the town clerk with the appropriate court. So without any further ado, let's ask the petitioner to speak. We have five members here today. As I said, we'll be, you'll need four of the five to overturn the building inspector's decision. Is anybody here on behalf of the petitioner? Has anybody signed up for the petitioner here and filed anything yet?
I think Attorney Martin and Tom Malone.
I am here.
Okay.
I'm here. I just, I was just. Sorry. I'm virtually here.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Martin.
Good evening, Mr. Begley. I think most of, not all of you are, have a reasonable degree of acquaintance with this project and with this matter. But for the sake of the record, I'd like to just take a few minutes to give you a brief summary, starting at the very beginning. The applicant owns the land, Zero South Pease Road, but Summers, Connecticut. It, there's no access other than through Summers, Connecticut. It is vacant land, surrounded by other vacant land, sitting next to land that high tension wires run through. The applicant through a different entity owns the property to the south of this parcel, which it is building a solar array. It went through the permitting process in Summers, Connecticut, and received all of the approvals. This property is residential. But as I say, you.
Yeah, Jim.
Access through Summers. Which, my client does, and which I think we've done to the, established that to the satisfaction of the zoning board of appeals. I'll get to in a few minutes, the historical point when we came before you regarding a variance. But for now, briefly tell you that they initially filed a petition for a zone change with the town. The town council referred it to the planning board. The planning board declined to endorse it. Went back to the town council, it was referred to a subcommittee. Took quite a long time, maybe six months or more before the subcommittee held a hearing. It took at least a couple of months more for the subcommittee to make another recommendation. It went back to the town council, and it took quite a long time before the town council ultimately voted on it. In the interim, my client, based on the denial from the, the negative recommendation from the planning board, filed a claim in the land court, challenging the legality of the Islom Meadow zoning bylaw. The chief justice wrote a decision on a motion, cross motions for summary judgment. Town of Islom Meadow filed a motion for summary judgment, and that is a motion that says, based on the facts, the bylaw and the law, the bylaw is legal. We petitioned to say, based on the facts and the law, the bylaw is unconstitutional, and does, it violates the standards of the statutes for solar Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The court ruled in my client's favor. Council for the, for the town at that time, in the dialogue with the land court, indicated that the remedy that they would, how they would address it was to go back to the planning board and complete the planning process, which we did. We had multiple rounds of appearances before the planning board addressing all of their concerns. We applied for waivers, I think four of the five waivers from the bylaw was granted on site design review. We met all the traffic studies, we went before the conservation commission and obtained their approval of our determination that there was no wetlands, and we weren't impacting anything. Right before what we thought was going to be the, which was, ended up being the penultimate hearing, the town announced through its planning board that it had retained new counsel, and that counsel had advised them that they could not approve the plan because there was no frontage. This is, this was quite a surprise, because town council had reported to the board, and it's on the record of planning board, that the frontage issue had been satisfied, and it was adequate. During the course of that discussion, the option was raised about getting a variance from the frontage issue, what we considered to be belt and suspenders, because we didn't think it was necessary, but to show the commitment to comply with things, we came before this board, and as you know, this board granted a variance and wrote a decision. We subsequently went back to the town, and despite that decision from the ZBA, the board voted to deny the site design review. Initially, without any findings read into the record, the, at the land court, the judge remanded it back for findings, and actually, they reopened the hearing, and when it was a two to two vote initially, which was a tie, which means it didn't pass, it then was a three to one vote against approval of the site design review. The decision, as you know, had a provision in it, that if we wish to appeal that, we could take it to the zoning board of appeals and reference your bylaw. We came before this board to be compliant, and you're, this vote voted that it did not have jurisdiction, that regardless of what the decision says, I think Chairman Begley said it's just incorrect statement, and you voted not to, to deny the appeal because you didn't have any jurisdiction on the grounds of jurisdiction. You didn't reach the merits of the claim. We went back to the zoning board, excuse me, to the building inspector, and then asked for a permit. As you know, based on what was just read, the building inspector denied the permit solely on the grounds that we did not obtain site design review from the planning board. Now, as an aside, as many of you know, having served on boards like this and been involved with development, you know, site design review is not covered by Chapter 48. Sort of a creature that has grown its own technicals over time and development. But nonetheless, Islom Meadow does have provisions about requiring site design review. And I just point that out because the building inspector relied solely on the fact that it did not have site design review, but one could argue that site design review would not be necessary in a case like this. So now you, here you are, as the appellate board, reviewing the building inspector's decision, and the facts that you have in front of you are that, that this, that the bylaw, as it stands right now, under cross motions for summary judgment, no final judgment yet entered, I'd like to note that for the record, so that, not to mislead anyone, has determined that the bylaw violates the statute. And we have presented everything and met every condition that was required under site design review, and that the reason that the site design review approval was not granted was because that the zoning bylaw, the very bylaw that has been declared illegal under this land court's decision, was not granted. So it now places us with a Hobbesian choice. You could, the law and the courts has said it's, it is illegal, that it is a violation of the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and yet, the town says, we're not giving you site design review because it doesn't comply with our bylaw that has been ruled by court of law to be in violation of the statutes of Commonwealth of Massachusetts governing solar development. So we're here today, following the procedures that are set forth, again, in your bylaws and in your structure, having applied for a building permit and having been denied. And I believe it is your obligation to rule on this, as an appellate court would, is that whether or not the building inspector failed to take into consideration that the bylaw that he's relying upon in the planning board decision have been ruled to be not in compliance and violation of the solar statutes. So I would also point out, just to inform the board, that the variance that this board granted was conditioned on, I think, four or five things. And at the last hearing on the appeal, we had some dialogue on that. It wasn't relevant necessarily because you were focusing on jurisdiction. But we have satisfied all but two things. And it's not for lack of trying, and I think there's a record of this that Bethany can provide, but if you need it. But we never got any communication back from the police department. We did get an email in January from the former chief saying, I apologize, I'm very sorry, I never got to get back to you, it was circumstances of time, and my fact that I retired, and I'm now retired now, so there's nothing I can do about it. The fire department, I don't believe we've ever heard from, but the DPW was okay with the requirements. We did obtain the concurrent access and, from the town of Summers, and that citing council approved that. So other than those two gaps, we have, we have complied or tried to comply with everything we could to satisfy the conditions, and we'll continue to do that if this board overturns the building inspector's decision and grants us a building permit to proceed with that project. So let's look at, you know, what we have here. We have a situation where the sole reason that this building permit was denied was because it did not receive site design review from the planning board. And the sole reason that the planning board says that they didn't do it is because it was in violation of the Islom Meadow bylaw on solar development in residential districts. And that bylaw, which they rely upon, has been deemed to be in violation of the Massachusetts statutes on solar development. So as you sit here today, you either are going to accept the fact that the is in violation of the statute to say, and, or you're going to say that we have, we will abide by the court's determination, and we will grant this, the building permit. That's a basic overview. So if anybody has any questions about that overview or any comments, I'd be happy to try and field them, from either a factual or legal standpoint.
My understanding was that the town bylaw was ruled illegal because under residential zones, they did not allow solar, and that was the reason that it was found to be in violation, because you can't have an out and out prohibition. I think the judge sent it back to the planning board and said, you still have to do your site plan approval. So I don't think he said that the site plan approval process was illegal, but, because he sent it back to the planning board. So I guess the concern I have here is that the building inspector is relying on what the, I mean, he's required under our ordinance to have a site plan approval before he can grant the building permit, and there is no site plan approval under our ordinance.
I, first of all, you, you are correct that he determined that the prohibition of solar in residential was in violation of the statute. And this part, owned residential. So that's clear. He did not remand it back to the planning board. He gave the town the option of what to do, and the town elected to allow the, to follow through and finish the site design review, and my client agreed to it.
Right, so I guess.
It wasn't that he said, and I, I don't think I ever said that he said site design review was not proper or not legal. Mr. Begley, you know from practice in this area for a long time that there's lots of writings about, you know, the outgrowth of site design review, even though it's not based in Chapter 48. But he, he did not say that, and I didn't, that he, he ruled that site design review wasn't proper or legal. And you are correct in saying that the building inspector made a determination because he doesn't have in front of him site design review. This is an appeal of that decision by the building inspector. You're the appellate review of the building inspector's decision. I don't think you are necessarily bound to say, because you don't have site design review, then what you did is okay. We're not blaming the building inspector. We are asking this body to look at this from a legal standpoint and determine that the building, a building permit can be issued in light of the current law.
Well, I guess my concern that I have is, because of the town ordinance, I mean, we're to, you know, I'm not sure we have a right to put ourselves into the shoes of the planning board and grant or deny site plan approval for any project, whether we agree with it or not, just not within our purview. We have a right to look and say whether or not the building inspector was correct or incorrect in making the decision he made. And in this particular feeling, my feeling is, and I'm not speaking for the board as a whole, was that there's a town ordinance that requires him to have site plan approval before he can issue any non-residential building permit. And in this case, he doesn't have that.
There's also a town ordinance that says you can't build in a zoning, in a residential district, and it's been declared to be not, in violation of the Massachusetts statutes. So this board can, I think must, and can, has the authority to say, you know, we are going to override the requirement for site design review in light of the law, in light of the court's decision, and, and issue a building. The building permit still would be subject to complying with whatever the building inspector requires for the building of a solar array. So it is not taking the building inspector out of that. You're still, so going to be pre-construction meetings, there's going to be designs, there's going to be plans. So this board, I think, has an opportunity to step up and make that determination, as opposed to just say, well, building inspector didn't have site design review in front of him, he, I had no choice. But we, and we have, we have no choice either. You do have a choice. It's up to you to decide whether or not you want to have exercised that choice today, and I think you should.
Yeah. I don't necessarily agree with you there. I believe, you know, that we were never designated as the board to decide site plan review and the provisions for site plan review. I think that's the purview of the planning board. We're sort of a complimentary board, and you're asking us basically to take the place of the planning board and give you a site plan approval, which, you know, that's not our charge.
No, I'm not asking you that. I, I'm not.
You're asking us to overturn it and to say that you're, we're giving you a site plan approval based on the material, and overturn the building inspector.
I'm asking you to, to vote to grant a building permit to the applicant because the reason for denial was based on the planning board's decision, which is in the face, contrary to what the court has ruled. This project is not just going to be developed and run amok because it has a building permit. It still has to comply with everything, and so there will be controls and measures through the development process. What this board is not saying, we're granting site design review, we're not asking you to do that. We're asking you to say.
Well, let me ask a question with respect to that. If we were to grant what you asked for this evening, what would control your development in the absence of the site and design review that you're asking us to circumvent for you?
I'm not asking you to circumvent it, first of all. I'm asking you to issue a building permit. Building codes, Massachusetts building codes, federal regulations for the building of a.
I understand all that, Jim. What I'm saying, what I'm asking you is, what the planning board was discussing with you presumably during your process, various things that they wanted in their, in your design, whatever they were. Are these things now out the window? If we give you a building permit tonight, do you just take your prototypical plans for a solar array and march over there and build it?
No, it's not prototypical, it was designed specific for this site. If memory serves me correctly, there wasn't one objection to any of the plans, any of the specifications, both of them.
I understand that, that's what I'm asking you. And what I'm, what I want to know is, how would the town be assured that this development would take place in the manner the planning board would have had it take place, had they, had they voted in favor?
Well, it's.
Well, can I answer that?
Sure.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Tom.
Well, because the site plan that, that we proposed was part of the building permit application, so this is the way we're going to build it.
Right, but it hadn't been approved by the planning board.
Right, it had not been approved by the planning board, but if, you know, if we were to make a change and try to throw this stuff out the window, then that, that would not be the building permit that you're approving.
Right, but it, it, I guess the question I have is, is what authority do we have if we don't like something in that plan to say, well, yeah, I think you need to change this, this, and this? I just don't think this board is equipped to get into planning decisions and the details that the planning board gets into in terms of those decisions in reviewing those plans. I know there are plans. They didn't address the quote issue because they skipped the issue and said, we're denying it in, in face of, of the decision because of the, the town bylaw and contradiction to what the land court basically had said. But they never addressed the issue of the plans.
Yeah, no, they did. Wait, wait, yeah, they did issue, they did address the plan. That was the decision that they made back in March, where we had basically agreed to everything on the plan. They said, this is the plan. They looked at it all and.
But they didn't approve it, they never took a vote formally approving it, correct? I mean, I understand what you're saying. I wasn't part of that meeting in the minutes.
Yeah.
So I can't speak to, you know, exactly what they said or didn't say. I've seen the plans you provided. I just don't have anything in writing from them or a vote that says, we've approved those plans. And I'm just concerned that this board isn't the board that's set up to review and approve plans like that. Well, they did in our jurisdiction, that's all. I understand we have jurisdiction to overturn a building inspector, but in essence, we would be, you know, I mean, theoretically, the planning board could come back and say, okay, we're going to make a bunch of changes now to the plan, and this is what we'll approve with these changes or not. I mean, and, and you could appeal that decision.
Excuse me, Tom. I, I don't think so, Mark. First of all, they answered Mr. Plackett's question. One, if you look at the minute, the record in the planning board was that they, every concern that was raised was addressed to their satisfaction. They even went to the specificity of issuing a written set of questions that they wanted answered, that we did, and they.
But they never voted, but they never voted as a board, Jim, did they?
Let me, let me finish. And, and they, they said, we addressed every issue. So in terms of Mr. Plackett, how will we enforce this? Those are the plans that were submitted to the building inspector. Those are the plans by which it has to be built. If you say, here's your building permit, it's to build those plans which comply. Now, what they did do, Mr. Begley, the first time, was that they voted two to two as a tie to approve the plans with additional conditions regarding frontage, and that was a two to two tie. Then they closed the hearing, which the land court, again, I believe, Tom can address this more clearly, but found that to be inappropriate as well. So how will you make sure that you don't get, you know, some erector set kit of a solar array, other than the fact that Mr. Malone and his company are investing millions and millions of dollars to build this, is that the plans were, up until the vote, were.
But the vote was a two to two tie, which isn't an approval.
I, I know.
But you know, Mark, since I'm the guy that raised this issue, I, after hearing Jim's explanation, I'm relatively comfortable with the idea that whatever plans that were being negotiated between the planning board and the applicant, probably, you know, ostensibly were, those negotiations were completed, that, that, that design was the design that, that had been bargained for. So I'm okay with that. I think now we're, we're dealing with the salient issue of, is this board, this board cannot step into the shoes of a planning board or any other board.
Not ask.
All, all we're able to do is what the petitioner's here tonight to ask us to do, which is to overturn the building commissioner's decision. And I don't think it, you know, based on what I've heard so far and the answer to the question that I just received, I don't think it requires a whole lot of analysis. I think we, it's a judicial thing, we just ought to, we ought to just vote it.
I, I do want to say one more thing, Spike, if you don't mind. I just want to remind you that the building inspector, if you were to grant a permit, has the authority to enforce the plans that were attached to the application. So that's another check and balance that would keep the plan, the project built. But thank you for your comments.
But in essence, we, they never voted, and we would be basically substituting, you know, in place of the planning board's site plan approval, because that's.
Oh, you're, no, that, Mark, excuse me, Mark.
How do we overturn the building inspector without approving your site plan? Which it hasn't been approved. Which he says hasn't been approved.
By saying, which is the correct statement, and I believe some of you might have even mentioned that last night, by saying that, that the sole basis for the planning board's decision and the sole basis for the building inspector's decision was the fact that it's being built in a residential zone. And it had nothing to do with the design of the project, so you're not stepping into their shoes for the design. And we're saying that that's wrong. The land court has said it's wrong and you can't, you should not perpetuate this series of ignoring the law. And you can, you can overturn this building, this building inspector's denial and say, issue a permit and the permit, the project will be built with accordance with the plans. So it's, we're not, nobody's saying you're the planning board, you're overruling the planning board, you're interjecting with the planning board. Not at all. Mr. Plackett summarized it fairly succinctly. This is a legal determination as to whether or not this wants to perpetuate this conduct of thwarting this project for no legal reason.
Well, Jim, I, I, I don't want to go that far. I, I, I wouldn't want my comments to be construed as I'm in favor of the project or I'm not in favor of the project. I, I just want to understand the facts. And the facts, as they relate to the design of the project, seem to indicate that the project was largely designed with the, with the input of the planning board. Regardless of that, the project cannot be built unless it complies with all applicable building codes. So I'm not concerned about that. On, on the other hand, I, I do have this question and it may indicate some ignorance on my own part, and I forgive me. What is the nature of mass general law with respect to residential zones? Is, is it, is it the case that no municipality, is this sort of like the Freedom of Communications Act back in the 90s where no, no one, no municipality may restrict residential land from solar use?
Mr. Malone can answer that because he was present in court, but, so I'll let him do it first.
Well, that's basically what the chief justice said, was that the zone, the statute or the state statute says no zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit the installation of solar energy systems or the building of structures that facilitate the collection of solar energy, except where necessary to protect the public health, safety, or welfare. So on that basis, the court invalidated the prohibition. And some building inspectors in Massachusetts have taken it upon themselves to invalidate zoning ordinances and issue building permits, even though the town's bylaws prohibited solar in certain, certain parts of the town. And that, that is something that, you know, we think the building inspector should have done here because the planning board, the only reason why they voted it down was because they were trying to prohibit the solar energy system. There was no issue on public health, safety, or welfare. They just disagreed with the chief justice and the land court. So from this board's perspective, I think the issue is really the same one that's going to be presented to the land court if we appeal and if we're denied here, is that did, does say the planning board's action basically constitute, which it does, a prohibition on a solar energy system on our property? And the answer is clearly yes, it does, because they just disagreed with the chief justice.
All right, Tom, thanks for that. Mark, let me ask you a question, given you're a land use attorney in Massachusetts. Is it the case that anybody could put up a solar array on any residential land in any town and run the land court?
No, I mean, that's, that's why I think it was sent back for the site plan approval because the purpose of site plan approval is for the purpose of protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And that's, you know, so that they can put conditions on an approval that will be enforceable. So the plans have, I don't know if there would be other conditions that they may want to put on that. And I, and I think really the true appeal here is the decision of the planning board, I think, was wrong. I don't think I have the jurisdiction to basically say, you know, the, the building inspector was wrong because he didn't, because we don't have a site plan approval that he's required under our ordinance to have so that he turned it down because it, and I understand what they're saying is that these guys basically have ignored the provisions and have voted illegally. And I, I don't disagree with them, but I don't think it's our position to sit here and put a site plan approval in place because that's in essence what we're doing. Because they never, because they made, in my opinion, the stupid decision and didn't put in, you know, protections for the public and safety. I think you got plans that is there. They may or may not meet all the requirements. And I'm just not sure from a planning point of view that our board's in a position to go in and look in those plans in detail and then say, okay, these are conditions in addition to the provisions of the plans that you have that we deem necessary for the protection of the, the public welfare, safety, and health.
Mark, let me ask you this question. If we deny this tonight and they appeal it and the land court rules in their favor, what would that decision look like?
Well, it's up to the land court what they want. The land court could just step in and do exactly what they were supposed to do and grant a site plan approval on their own. Or they could remand it back to the planning board with directions that they are not to deny it and to put conditions that they feel are appropriate to.
That's, that's the problem. Because, you know, we're in a town where not everybody likes the idea of solar arrays being built on residential property. Not everybody likes the idea of the state of Massachusetts telling towns what they should and should not do on residential property where the people making these edicts don't live. Okay, so, so, you know, maybe what ought to happen here is let the land court grant site design approval. I, I wish they would, let them do it. If they're going to tell the towns what to do and how to do it, then let them tell us and then we'll do it.
So there are two things.
Mark and Dan.
I was just going to say, I, I wanted to point out, Mr. Plackett, that in the land court's decision, they referenced it. I, I think you must have heard the Dover Amendment. And that is a decision that came down that says, you know, you can't prohibit a school, educational, or religious use of a property that's zoned residential. And the land court made reference to that, I believe, Tom, in analogizing why they decided what they wanted to do. The second, the second, the second thing for the record is that the record is complete and it's, the record is complete that there were no objections to, not one iota of the site design review after six hearings. Everything was buttoned up. It was denied solely because the town reverted back to its position that they weren't going to grant site design review despite the court's findings of a solar array in a residential setting.
I don't necessarily agree with that, that position. But on the other hand, I don't think we're in a position to set the conditions that would be there. And I think it would be, the town has taken one hell of a risk in doing this by turning it down illegally because the land court judge does have the authority on their own to overturn the decision and allow it just based on the plans. And I, and I'm just not prepared for this board. And I don't think we as a board have the expertise, we're not the planning board, to go through the details on the plans. I don't have a problem necessarily with the, with the project, but I just don't think it's this board's purview to then look at the plans and say, well, we're happy with the plans in terms of what they're against the planning board. But I don't know if they were going to put conditions on. They never got to that point because they, they decided that they wanted to go invoke some crazy way, which I think is ill-advised. But I think the proper remedy is either the court overturns it or they send it back on remand to the board and say, you got to approve it. We're going to give you a chance to put conditions to protect the town, if that's what the court decides to do.
Mark, this is Fran. Jim, sorry, just, does anybody, Jim, has anybody gone back to the planning board after the land court's decision?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what they did. They reported.
You did go to that and they, they disapproved it again because we started with this before, when they first threw it out, before we had the land court's decision.
So you, you're correct. Yes, we have been back to them. And, you know, what, what this applicant is asking this board to finally do is to have this, have a board in this town recognize what the law is, stop making excuses. The plans that are attached to the building permit would have to be, the plant, the development would have to be built. This is not a house, it's not a shopping center. It's not a car wash. It is a solar array. And we're asking this board to be the first board that steps up and does its job and says, this person, this applicant, this landowner, this taxpayer has been three years in the making getting kicked around in this town. Always winning court. And now you're saying, go back to court one more time. We're not, we're not going to do our job. We're just going to let somebody else do our job for us. I don't think, I, we'll let the land court do this. Do it now. Issue the building permit. How is it?
They think it's our job, Jim, that's the problem. I don't think it's the job of the ZBA to make decisions that overturn a planning board denial.
We're going to go around all night.
That's my opinion.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
So, so rather than, you know, have you take the position that it's not in our purview, which I don't disagree with, and have Jim continue to argue what he continues to argue, why don't we, you know, maybe let some of the other members say what they'd like to say, if they've got something to say, and then bring this thing to a vote?
That's fine. We appreciate that.
I'm curious, has the bylaw been amended since your initial appeal in the land court's decision?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chan, you broke up. I, I didn't hear you.
Has the bylaw been amended subsequent to your?
No.
There is a moratorium in place until September 2021. And in that time, the town has to establish a new, an amendment to the existing solar bylaw that permits ground-mounted solar arrays in residential zones, which is, which it doesn't at the moment, which is the issue.
All right. But the, the moratorium is in place, but there's no, all that, all that does is it expires or it gets extended. It doesn't guarantee that the bylaw will be revised or amended.
It has to be voted on by then, Jim. That's what they're trying to do. But, you know, whether they deny it or not, we don't know at this point.
Correct.
I mean, I guess I would just ask you to think of one other question. Don't you think the planning board, having been given two opportunities to vote on site plan approval, and basically they just declined to approve it, which is unlawful? Don't you think they waived their rights to do that? And that some boards.
That, I don't, I don't know that we have the authority to do that. That's the problem. And I, I'm not saying you got so wrong. I'm, I'm just frustrated with the whole process. And I'm more frustrated with our planning board in terms of punting this issue and sticking it to the solar company. You know, in terms of, of what's there. If in fact, what's there, but I'm not prepared for this board to start putting, saying, hey, when we disagree with the decision that the, the planning board made rightfully or wrongfully, I just don't think we have the authority to just throw out their decision when it's required. The building inspector to issue the, the permit. That's the problem. And I just don't know, you know, I think they're wrong, but I'm not sure we have the ability to throw out the planning board decisions because there is no site plan approval. Because we become, we have to give you the site plan approval.
The planning board has to address this. They're the ones that denied it, you know?
Well, the court's going to, the court's going to address it for them. That's what's going to happen here. The court is going to say, this is approved with these plans and you're not going to get a chance to put any conditions on it. Or they're going to say, these plans are approved, but you're going to get a chance to put conditions on. I'm going to remand it, but you can't turn it down. I mean, that's what I think is probably going to happen.
Mark, my understanding is that this is statutorily the, the next step they must take.
Correct. They have to exhaust their administrative remedies.
All, all I'm saying, and I don't disagree with anything that you've said. All I'm saying is, you know, it, it, it doesn't seem to be productive to continue to argue that it's not within our purview. It, it seems to me that what we ought to do is do what this applicant has asked us to do and that is put this to a vote based on the, the, the facts before us. I, I, I would ask that we do that.
Yep, that's right, yeah.
Do any of the other board members have any other input or questions before we, we, we close the public or ask for comments?
I think we asked for comments, right? And I don't know if there's anybody else out there, Mark.
Just you and Charles, you got any comments to make on it or?
No, I mean, I, I, I think I recognize the predicament that, that
they're in.
The, the applicants are in. At the same time, I, I, I definitely appreciate our chairman's comments.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think it's, I think it's a dangerous precedent to, to, you know, bring something to this board and, and essentially have us be the permitting authority and we're not equipped to do that.
That is in our jurisdiction. You're right. Okay.
So do we have anybody in opposition giving them a chance or anybody else who wants to speak in favor? Is there anybody else in the meeting here? Bethany, you're on mute.
Yeah, we have Marilyn Richards and we also have Michael Pill.
Okay. If Mr. Pill or Marilyn Richards wish to speak?
I sent Marilyn in, but I don't know where her screen is.
Well, as long as we can hear her, I mean, we don't need to see her. Is either Mr. Pill or Ms. Richards prepared to speak?
I'm happy to speak.
Okay.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Marilyn Richards, town counselor. I'm, actually hadn't planned to speak this evening. I just listened for information. We have a case management conference coming up regarding this particular issue on February 18th. I assume that's with the judge. We are in the throes of appealing the original decision, as you all know. And I find it a little uncomfortable that there's a, a lot of pressure on the zoning board of appeals this evening to go against what the town is trying to straighten out with this particular application before us. At the time the zoning bylaw was created, we allowed it by right in two zones. We, we prohibited ground mount in the residential zone. However, solar garage mounts or roof mounts are certainly allowed throughout the entire residential zone. It has to do with interpretation to some degree. I know that attorney Michael Pill is, one of his issues has to do with Euclidean zoning, where there, where a town does have the right to create zones for different uses. And East Lo Meadow has never invited industrial operations within the residential zone. At the time PLH purchased this property, they knew it was zoned residential. They knew that there was going to be a bit of a challenge. They knew that what they wanted to do wasn't, wasn't permitted by, you know, wasn't permitted by the zoning bylaw. We also know that this particular situation was heard by another court with a very different decision. So East Lo Meadow is just trying to protect its residential zone. We have a case before the judge. And I would respect everyone waiting to see how that plays out before we're pressured into making a decision about issuing a building permit for a site that does not have site plan approval. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Marilyn.
Does Mr. Pill wish to speak? If he does speak, speak now or forever hold your peace.
Yeah, I'm trying to speak. Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay, just a second. Start the video. I'm trying to start the video. There we are. Okay, thank you. What you have heard is an argument that's taken the better part of an hour. And I would be happy, were we in the. an hour, and I would be happy, were we in the lay-in court, to take just as much time and go through it point by point and point out the factual and legal inaccuracies and the omissions of significant facts. Okay, you have been presented with one side of a multi-part story. As my immigrant grandfather used to say, there are really three sides to every story. I'd be happy, as they have done, to take up the better part of an hour of your time and point out each and every factual and legal error in what you have been told tonight by the applicant. But that's a matter for the land court. And the third side, your side, my side, and the right side, that's for the land court to decide. The highly touted ruling of the land court was not a final judgment. It was interlocutory. It disagreed with two other land court decisions, which the chief justice acknowledged. I have a motion for reconsideration, which very interestingly has never been decided, and the land court judge has been very carefully waiting for this case to come back through the exhaustion of administrative remedies and get to the land court. And the planning board decision includes the better part of 35 or 40 pages of legal analysis that I provided to the planning board, that I would be happy to argue to the land court, and I certainly get the impression you all don't need or want to hear it tonight. And I'm going to stop right, right there, and thank you for your patience and your courtesy, and hope that what you will decide to do is to allow the land court and possibly the appellate court to make the decision, because this is a case of first impression. And fundamentally, one of the points I made in the planning board decision is that this is an industrial use. And under what's called Euclidean zoning, separating commercial, industrial, residential uses, it has absolutely no place. Whether the land court will accept that argument, the planning board did by a three to one vote, whether the land court or appellate courts will accept it remains to be seen, but we're going to have to get there first. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Anybody else present? And just one opportunity for the petitioners. Is anything the petitioners want to say in rebuttal of what either Marilyn Richards or Mr. Pill had to say?
Tom, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I don't have anything else to add.
Okay, so do we have a motion to, questions of the board?
Excuse me, what was your question, Mark?
I just want to know, we had, anybody else had any questions on the board? Because I entertain a motion to close the public hearing portion.
All moved.
All moved, yep.
Second, all in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Note that it was unanimous, and that we have a motion to either approve or disapprove. If one of the members of the board would like.
Motion to deny.
Deny. And what would be the reason for the denial? Just to?
It's like the land court to make this decision. The zoning board should not be in a position to make this decision.
I would ask for an amendment that just be added that the town bylaw does require a site plan approval. There is no site plan approval in this particular case before the building inspector can issue the permit. So I would deny it based on the fact that there is no approved site plan.
I'll consent to your amendment to my motion.
We have a second on the amended motion.
I second, Mark.
Okay. All in favor of the amended motion? Motion. We'll do a roll call vote. Obviously, we'll start with you, Dan. You approve the denial with, as acted, okay. Jim?
Again, I approve the denial. Section 7.41 says that a building permit, no building permit shall issue without site plan review approval and planning board approval. I don't think it's discretionary.
Charles?
Aye.
So you're in favor as well, and I also am in favor. I do think it needs to be resolved by the courts, not by us. I don't agree with what the planning board has done to this petitioner. And, you know, maybe they want to make a stand and claim that this law shouldn't have been overturned, but I'm not in a position to say yea or nay. But you have a right to appeal this to the court. I think it's already pending, and I think the land.
Mark, did Fran, did Fran vote?
Yeah, he voted, yeah. He voted nay. So we have a five-nothing vote here. So it's been denied. I'll file the decision with the town clerk within the week, hopefully, and it can be appealed to the, to the land court as, you know, as having exhausted your administrative remedies. You'll now be in a position that there are no impediments for the court, in front of the court, to make the decision. And the town's going to take the risk here, I think. And I think it was a big risk the planning board took here, that if the land court overturns it and just puts in, they may not get the conditions they might have wanted. But so be it. Thank you, everybody. Are there any other matters to be brought up before the board tonight?
No, just the case.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Charles?
Second.
Second. All in favor, raise your hand.
Good night, everybody.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Have a good one.
Sorry, we couldn't help you.